Yeah, permitting and we've been talking about permitting. I haven't been able to be in every single one of them, so. But it's moving in the right direction.
Where is the most recent version of the plan as for what the council can do? When I was doing students' website, everything looked, all the documents looked pretty old. There's nothing updated. Is it just that you have it?
It's on the Lincoln website. The overall plot.
And that's accurate? That's the most detailed thing you ever said.
Yeah, we just got a meeting today at two o'clock. It's very, it's happening very quickly.
Well, this spring, right? We expect to break around this spring.
April or May.
I, I, I use symbols. Call to order the November regular meeting of the school committee in regional high school. Let's go straight to the chair's report. Just introduction of a new student representative, Anna Julie Brooks. So say hi. Do we have an official report today?
It's on the agenda. Yours has been along as well.
I know. No, we're gonna go through it fast. Okay, so great. Introduction to student representative, that's good. Okay, receipt. I've got to read this specifically. The chair should acknowledge the receipt of a letter from Belmont. State the date, the date the letter was received by the district. What was the date of the letter received by the district? The letter is in the packet.
October twenty-fourth.
October. It's the date of twenty-fourth. Received on the twenty-sixth. So the letter from Belmont, notice of withdrawal, was received on October twenty-sixth. And this information should be noted in the minutes of the meeting.
I believe you have.
Great, okay, we don't want to slow them down. Subcommittee assignments, I believe that these are on page sixteen and seventeen of your packet. And I do have a few comments. Yes, please give me a motion. Very good. So we ran into a technical detail. Because our new regional agreement specifies weighted voting for the school committee as a whole, the question arose was if this had any impact on our subcommittees. Now, in my reading of the regional agreement, it seems that the language is very specific to the full subcommittee only. But on this kind of matter, because, you know, people can raise objections, I decided to contact legal counsel, which is interesting. So what legal counsel told me was that the language of the regional agreement does not bind our subcommittees to weighted voting. But because subcommittees usually reflect the same practices as the main committee, and we don't have anywhere in our documents that specify how voting occurs in subcommittees, it would be wise to specify how subcommittees vote. However, whatever method they want to. They gave us three options on how to do this. Now, one of the options, which is probably the most desirable in the long run, is to place in our rules of order, the Minuteman rules of order, how we want subcommittees to deal with their voting. In my opinion, it is impractical for numerous reasons for the subcommittees to reflect weighted voting. Nor would it be useful in any way. So I think I'm gonna ask the policy subcommittee, which we will have in a few minutes, the packet board, to take a look at that. In fact, perhaps to review our rules of order as a whole, because various laws since then have probably put some of the features there out of date. In the meantime, what we can do for this year is specify when we create our subcommittees, the methodology of how voting works, which is why you have this preamble in the motion, which specifies that subcommittee vote is by majority of subcommittee members present and voting regardless of weight. That's why you have that few sentences there. So that makes us legal for this year, and we put it in our rules of order that we're legal as long as those rules of order are there. Okay, so I'm just, so the, so when you take your vote, that's why I'm specifying that as well. Mr. Orton.
Just a clarification. Does present and voting mean that abstention, does the way it's worded, does not count as a vote?
That means, that is the language to make an abstention not count as a vote. It's the language we should have in our, in my opinion, our regional meeting. Now, also, before we go to our vote, I want to thank all the people who have agreed to be part of these committees. Once again, or sometimes new ones, thank you very much for your service and for willing us to do so. And on that, let's go to, are there any comments on the motion on the table by the membership? Very well then, move to the vote. All in favor of the motion on the table that'll establish our subcommittees and whatnot for you, please raise your hand. I take that down?
I will, as soon as the same vote from the committee.
One, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. That's eleven in favor, one abstention, who's just walked in. So Jack Weiss, who just walked in, abstains, and eleven of us are in favor. Carrie, use a faster computer.
You know, if you're one of those system operators and it doesn't work, you play a bit of stuff. There was one thing I wanted to say about that, you know, but I don't know what to do to both of them. And that is with a smaller finance committee, I think is important, because two of us are officers, to try to schedule the meeting in a better quality and time. And we're getting rid of that, too. And we're trying to schedule work, project meetings, and that.
Well, while she's doing that, we can move on to our next vote, and she can postpone these at the same time. It'll be uncontroversial. On page nineteen, we have graphs, school committee goals. We decided to keep these short and very focused on launching the building project appropriately, both the project itself and helping with the education plan, and of course, continuing to work on long-term enrollment issues. So these are the three goals that are recommended by the officers. And if I can have a motion to accept these as our goals, I would appreciate it. Discussion, these goals are primary goals for the year, along with, of course, the regular stuff. Any discussion on that? Yes, sir.
Would it be possible?
I'd like to suggest we try to make them a little bit more concrete. As in, for example, number two, something more of supporting the superintendent in, I can't think of the right language, but something like sticking to the building guidelines, or not guidelines, but plans that we have, guidelines. Thank you, timeline.
I certainly have no objection to some of that. But let's remember that we're not the primary group who's doing the work on the project. That's gonna be the building committee and the administration. We have a kind of slightly more distant view of it. We're not involved in the day-to-day details. I would say that philosophically, our goal that is stated by Ford's, probably not language that's suitable for this, is that the key is on time and on budget. So when I say oversee the evolving building project, behind that is that phrase, which to me is the key phrase, on time and on budget. And the other thing that means a lot to me is with the capabilities that we've promised. Because on this project, when we brought it around, we said that we're gonna have these facilities in the building, and we're gonna have these programs. So to me, all that's included. But if the group wants more language, I'll be happy to take these back and bring them to you again in another month. But I don't want to get to micromanagement level.
I was just hoping we could come up with goals where we could actually measure our success. Would it not be possible?
Right, exactly. Well, let me go through all three of these, and let's see how we can measure our success. Working out long-term enrollment issue, I see that as a two- to five-year goal. So progress on that is going to be difficult to measure in the short run. But what we can do is make sure we have a laser focus on it and bring it up on a regular basis.
But that do you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yes.
But that do you need increasing in district students, or many holding students, or?
I'll tell you what I've been saying to people on that goal, and the administration may have a different bent on it. To me, there are two parts to the goal. The first part is to fill the school with six hundred and twenty-eight students, regardless of whether they're in district or out of district. That's one goal. That's the most important goal. The second goal is to create the right balance between in district and out of district students, which is gonna require different things to happen. So to me, those are the two goals, in the order that they're most likely to happen. And I see, you know, looking forward, it's gonna be, I think, a lot easier to achieve those goals when the new building is open. And yet, you have to work on it now. So the, a little reason I would be reluctant to put numbers down is because I think that you can't reduce them. I think it's gonna be a bit of time before we achieve these goals. And the important thing is to realize that these are longer-term goals, as I say, two to five years. But you have to keep working on them all the time. So to me, by putting them here, it's a commitment to this, let everybody know how important we think it is. And the fact that we're gonna be talking about this a lot, even though it may not be possible to set a goal, say, one year, I don't know. Carrie.
My mind's wrong now. I think that this goal, I agree with what you've said, but I think it is possible to measure progress and mark milestones met, or steps taken towards the goal. And declaring success is something that is further out and harder to define.
Alice.
I agree with this very differently. So to me, the goal here is to support the superintendent. And there are three items that we're supporting superintendent on long-term. Enrollment issues, overseeing the building project, implementing the education program plan, including the catering rules, that's the educational goal. And that what this does is it drives the agenda for the school committee meeting. So you're testing what is gonna be on the agenda. It should be something that has to do with one of these three goals. And just by providing that structure, you're going to drive progress. I've seen, you know, twenty years now in various school committees of SMART goals, and I spend an awful lot of time in school committees trying to develop SMART goals and not actually measuring anything in the end. So I actually like these goals, because as long as the committee sticks to, this is the agenda, this is what these things are gonna be, what we're doing with, then we'll be good.
Dr. Buckwell.
Yeah, I appreciate the discussion. If you look at the superintendent goals, they go along with these, and they're much more granular. And it has that level of specificity that I think you're longing for. And, you know, your job is to kind of hold me accountable for those school committee goals, because they are my goals as well. Except if we, we'll get to that part. And Jennifer was probably gonna say something similar.
Well, yes, I was. So my only request would be to, because working on long-term enrollment issues, you know, for somebody, they might read that and say, there aren't enough girls in the school. There's not, you know, there's literally enrollment issues. So if we put that back in the superintendent's goals, I'm fine with it.
Actually, I like that issue, that goal, too. I would consider that to be under our purview as well.
But I think we need to define that, because, you know, if somebody else might say there aren't enough, you know, blond-haired, blue-eyed, I don't know, volleyball players. I don't, you know, some, what are the enrollment issues? So if we, from language. What if we tie that back and just specify that it is in reference to the goals specified by the superintendent's goals? Something along, I just, it needs more focus. I think you, it's too open-ended. You can read it any way you want. And you can even say it's your goals are to, or our goals are to work on the long-term enrollment issues, specifically maintaining six point eight student enrollment and finding the correct balance between in district and out of district. But something more, my.
Ford, you have, were you about to talk about?
I'm not sure what I want to say. I will say, if you look at enrollment, what can the school committee do? And I think we can focus on increasing enrollment in our own district. And that's just saying good things about them, and talking about them, and talking about what's going on, and talking to your own superintendents in your district, talking to your parents, to try to encourage them to look at Minuteman as a good option for the right kid. So, I mean, to me, that's what we should do. There are other issues that come into enrollment, and that includes communities that may be interested in joining the district, all that. But I don't think that's necessarily our role. I think, unless we think there's an opportunity, and I think that's more the administration and others to work on that. I am convinced this building in two thousand and twenty is gonna be built, and it's without a problem. And the more I'm, I'm involved with this, I think we're gonna have long wait months, maybe a year or two after that. And it's gonna be mainly in district, because I think we're gonna be growing. And I think there's a lot of interest now, especially in regrowing the district. But I think that's so the administration should do so. If you're looking at long-term enrollment issues, I think let us play a part in our own districts to try to help increase enrollment. Talk to me about, save the things about the district all the time.
But it does say here that we are not taking the primary initiative, we're supporting the superintendent's.
Should be under the guidance of Lieutenant and George Coman and whoever else is around.
More comments, Carrie.
Well, along the lines of what Ford is saying, we all have opportunities to speak in public hearings and in town meetings when issues related to Minuteman come up. And I think the extent to which we can, truthfully, but with a positive and supportive spin, that gives parents, if it's school administrators in the home district, a better level of comfort for realization of what's available at Minuteman that they might not otherwise have known, because it's hard to get us in the newspaper coming of it. When it's a relatively small part of what's going on in Oxford or even Arlington, even though the enrollment there is high, it's a smaller piece of the overall high school population. And getting stories out that people know, use the avenues that we have as individual members of the school committee representing and acting as a liaison to our own school districts, our administrators, our school committees there.
Let me follow up with something, and I started with what Alice said. These should be our agenda items, and almost everything the committee needs. So these are, you know, administration, we can go to the administration and say, you know, give us a presentation, or do something on this. Building committee is easy, but I think, and we will be talking about it every week, but I think this should be further. What is the progress? What's being done in the school, on the education plan? How does that affect that we're involved in that, that side?
And that's why I don't mind leaving that vague.
I don't have a problem with it either.
But we could, you know, if the school committee wants, we could take it back and try to make it more specific. But I'm personally comfortable with tagging these as long goals, and these are the things that will be on our agendas. And it's the administration which is the prime mover of them, although we do a role, since we set the budget. Things like salaries to explore new methods of their recruitment is under our purview, as is people who are creating new stories. There are lots of things that are under our purview, but these are the things that I think that the, everybody wants to see, if we have our eye on the progress. So these are the things that should occur under many different guises throughout the year. That's probably.
If we, if we leave the goals the way they're written, what would be the mechanism for, for people like Jennifer, or other people on the school committee to, to feed ideas to the superintendent about some of the detail of this, for instance, Jennifer talking about girls, or whatever, and who do, how, might we be able to give head suggestions or give credit? The school committee has a, could we directly suggest this would be an aspect that we'd like to, to see covered under this particular goal?
Well, I'll tell you one way. The chair is very fond of all three of these goals. And very fond of them, because I think that these are the things that we need to focus on now that we're done with the discussion about how we're gonna have a new building. And I will spend a lot more time on that. And I think that a, for example, reminder that one of the issues we have been talking about was increasing the female population of the school is a great thing to remind us of. And that is certainly something you can funnel through the officers, and that's gonna, it would end up being part of one of the agenda, I hope I can guarantee it. So you want some specifics, you can funnel it through, I would go to Liz, and then to us. And I'd love to hear more about what the administration is planning to do, to try, and I'm sure that there's some things, in the back there, might, to do in that particular aspect of the enrollment issue.
Two ways to treat that would be.
Exactly. Because we're gonna have a lot more time in our meetings now for these types of stuff than we have in the past. That's my prediction. So the question I have is, so right now, we have this on the table. Somebody could make a motion if they want for us to take it back and make it more specific, or without that, I'm just gonna continue with these items as they are now. Further discussion will get on the table. Very well then, all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Oh, great, I'm done. Now I can take them out for the rest of the event. After the next exciting presentation, we have had a student presentation for a while, so I was writing.
We'll take the ideas.
Multi-pleas. Are you okay, Jecter?
Okay, yes.
Yes, very good. So Anna Julie Brooks, your presentation, you look before, thank you very much.
Hi, everyone, my name is Anna Brooks, I'm from Belmont. And I'm a senior here at Minuteman in the culinary arts. So to begin, I am here to answer the question, what is life like for students at Minuteman? It's been an exciting year so far. As a member of the new school building committee, I was excited to hear we'd be getting our new school. Congratulations to Dr. B., the school committee, and all of Minuteman community. It definitely was an exciting start to be here. A big change this year is advisory blocks and special advisory blocks. What the advisory blocks do for us is we get an extra ten minutes at the beginning of each day to talk to our CTE major teachers, ask questions, and just check in. During the special advisory blocks, which we usually take place on Wednesdays, we have all different types of clubs and activities that meet up to discuss everything going on in these different clubs. On Wednesdays, I go to hear book meeting, and discuss with my peers everything we've planned for the next week and upcoming month. October was very, was a very busy month here. We had Spirit Week and Homecoming. Spirit Week events including Tuesday, Foot Tuesday, in turn, and Wicked Wednesday. Our daily celebration, Boston's fabulous sports teams. We also carried out a very sacred tradition of powder puffing, when girls seized the gridiron and showed Morris how it's done. We capped off Spirit Week with a successful pep rally, where we introduced our senior sports athletes. And Mr. Murphy and Mrs. Chavier each got a prime face. To cap off October, we had Halloween costume contest, and winners each got a lunch at the Vibe Room. Another interesting and fun, Anna, initiative, sorry, here at Minuteman is the Sit With Me Lunch Program. Our school psychologist, Dr. Kelly, and Ms. Bruno have been on the program for students meeting each other at lunch tables, talk about interesting topics like video games or sports. We are hoping to foster friendships and positive relationships here at Minuteman, where we realize not only is it important to be a student, but being a good person matters, too. November began with the election day. We held a school-wide electronic mock election under the guidance of Ms. Sherry Nathan and Ms. Tracy Sierra. The students here, just like the adults across Commonwealth, endorse Secretary Clinton for president, and also read Commonwealth's choices for all of the referendum questions. Today was Showcase Day, where we welcomed between three hundred and three hundred and fifty eighth graders. We seem to have a really good day, and will hopefully realize all the benefits of coming to Minuteman. We have a quick one-minute animated video with some of the previously mentioned events.
Very quick.
Thank you for your dedication, and I look forward to getting known and all of you.
Anybody in the public like to make a comment to the school committee today? Well, thank you very much. Subcommittee reports. Student Negotiations and Evaluation Subcommittee, Mr. David Orton.
How about superintendent?
Superintendent Negotiation and Evaluation Subcommittee, David Orton.
We didn't get to the student bill, we did have time for student negotiations. If you look on, if you look on page twenty-one, starts on page twenty-one, the superintendent goals, the educator plan, and also, starting on page twenty-one, is the calendar for the educator evaluation cycle deadlines and process for this year, this school year, that we will observe with Dr. Buckwell's contract. And before I, just talk about the goals themselves, which are in the ensuing pages, I'd just like to give you a little background. We worked very closely with Marion Hen, who's the Director of Educator Evaluations for the school, and when we had questions about process or forms or whatever, and one of the things, one of the elements that we did adopt, that was suggested by the school committee was to not have, do a formative evaluation, but a formative assessment, but just to move on to the substantive. But I'll talk a little more about that as I go through here. But I'll talk a little more about that as I go through here. So we, we found out that that, we had the prerogative to do that. So looking at our calendar, the leap we have observed for the superintendent's evaluation made sense not to have, if you want to take a formative evaluation. So we have one, also want to thank Mary Ann Hand for, for working with us and helping a great deal to put things together. Earlier in the school committee meeting, school committee, school committee meeting today, this evening, people, Ed talked about, and I think Jeff, Jeff may have too, about the alignment among the, the school proven plan, which you'll see a little later on, school committee goals, superintendent leadership goals, which we're, which is our, our purview that we're working on, and school-wide goals, that they're, they are aligned with one another. The administration and staff has worked to align its goals and to understand what the major goals are that each, that each group, if you wish, would work on. So they're, they're not discrete ETE goals that are not related to other, other goals. And that seemed to make a lot of sense to us. So as we talk about the superintendent's goals in just a moment, per se, you'll see that, and as the school committee meeting goes, goes forward tonight, you'll see how they are aligned and related to one another. As I said, at the, a moment ago, we did eliminate the mid-year formative assessment, and that would be replaced by monthly reports by Ed on the goals. May not be on every goal each time, but there will be a monthly report from the superintendent about progress made on, on the goals that. And we were, the subcommittee really was emphasizing and emphasized that we, that we want to, we want evidence that shows, that shows meaning, we mean school committee, what was achieved and what were the outcomes, what was, what was the impact on, on student learning and on the staff and on the school? And in some cases, it may be, it may be worthwhile to, for the superintendent to provide us what I, what I would call executive summaries backed up by evidence, so that we don't have to, you know, here's, here, here are copies of meetings that touched on the subject, but what came out of them, so that through an executive summary, we wouldn't have to read it word for word in order to find out what was achieved. So we, we were looking for evidence and what, what outcomes were, what was achieved. And then, of course, backed up by data and reports, et cetera. Also, I just want to mention Dave, Carter, Jennifer, and I of the subcommittee, and certainly if you two want to chime in any time, please do that. So as I said, each month we'll, we'll have a report from the superintendent on, on progress toward the goals. And also, one of, and one of them, I don't think, I'm not quite sure if it's mentioned here, but we talked about, there may be, to find out, for instance, how professional, professional learning communities are, are, what their impact is on, on teaching of students. There may be a survey administered to, to the staff to see, to ask them directly, how do you think your life as a teacher and your students were impacted by the work that was done by the, by the emerging academy model and professional management communities? Something like that, too. The summative report, the very end, the last one, will be delivered at our May school committee meeting. And the online evaluation, so Ed will give us his final report at the May meeting. The online evaluation will open at that point. We haven't really decided how long, not like it's a big question, how long it will be open, maybe two weeks, 10 days, we just didn't decide. Then the, the subcommittee, Dave, Jennifer, and I will sit down with the, with the, the data and comments presented by, written by each school committee member and present that, that information at the June meeting. And also what we'll, at the June meeting, and what we'll also do, you'll also hear a recommendation from, from the subcommittee regarding a raise of the superintendent, which is part of the, part of the contract that's something that we, that we go year by year. And it's spelled out in his contract, but the parameters out there, of the possible grade, certainly contingent upon effectively meeting his goal. Any question about what I've said, and then I'll just walk you, just walk you through the goals a little bit. Okay. Take a look at page 22, if you will, which is, there, there, there are four goals, but two of them are, are compressed. Page 23, we'll call it compressed or, or they align so closely that we, we combine them. Leadership goals, two and four. I just wanted, just going to give you, let's take a look at the first goal on page 22. Not to, not to read and necessarily discuss all the content, I just want to let you know how it's laid out. First of all, these are, the goals on these next, on these three pages are, are leadership goals for the, for the superintendent. And if you look at the rubric for evaluating superintendent, as well as the rubric for evaluating teachers, and I also use that same, very similar rubric for evaluating student teachers in my role, my job at Simmons College, interestingly enough. But just looking at page 22. Look at the, where it says standard, there are four standards, there are four standards under which the superintendent is evaluated. And this first standard is called instructional, instructional leadership. And under the age standard, there are a certain number of indicators, in other words, you look for this kind of, it's, it's really getting down, digging down, if you wish, into the standard, and these are some of the, some of the elements of the superintendent's or the teacher's work that, that are part of, in this, in this case, instructional leadership. Then the indicators themselves are subdivided into, to elements or, in each, which are really performance statements and criteria for each, each particular standard. So you start out with a goal, and then they're subdivided into, well, the standards are subdivided into indicators and elements. I also just wanted to mention, under standard four, it's listed, if you look at standard four, the, the indicators are listed as A, B, C, D, A, A, B. I just noticed when I was looking at them at the end this evening, that A, B should be E and F on both, on all, well, two, the first two pages. The third one, it's written as E and F. I'm not sure why that happened, but we'll change that so that there are A through S. Actually, F is subdivided in three, Sub-S, it's called. It gets very detailed. So there are, there are strategies and action plans, there are resources indicated for some, and there are evidence to, some of the evidence and benchmarks are indicated too. Just moving, going through the other, the other two goals, you see that the, the next two are, are pages 23, 24, written in greater detail. But the, the first goal also requires a good deal of, of getting the job done. But as I said at the beginning, there isn't a line up between these goals among all the different goals for the bodies in the school that are responsible for goals, so that there is coordination then, and people being able to support each other as they go through and do their work in the school. It made, it made a lot of sense to our committee to see that happen, and I think it makes sense to the, to the officers who we met talking about the goals we just talked about this evening. Does anyone have any questions about, about what I've just said, about the goals or what I said or didn't say?
So I was just going to point out that, so Ed is going to present the superintendent's report, and if you look at the agenda, is some topics reference one of these goals, so we can keep track. The idea is to be able to evaluate. And I think also, in addition to your progressively monthly, monthly meetings, we also discussed the possibility of having supportive staff in to support the goals as well. Specifically, I would say, you know, we have a development team to come back and, I just wanted to say that there would be additional possibilities for additional people to present to us the other subjects.
Right, very good, thank you, Jeff. Jack.
David, not a question about this particular, but about the time, in future years, is the, is the goal to try to do this around July or so? Because it seems to me that we are into November, a lot of the specific things here that are listed, you know, are through November, so we're putting together the plan at the point in time that the work has already been done. Seems to me this is a more effective tool if this is done in July-ish as opposed to midway through the year.
Yeah, if we can get, if we can move the cycle up, I think that, firstly, I think that would be a good idea. I, I think we probably, because of all the other things we were doing, we got a little...
Yeah, just add, just add into that, it's really the vote and all of that pushed us into focusing on all those things. So this came up earlier, but we decided to delay it because we needed to focus on other things. I'm not sure that July is, would be reasonable because, you know, the cycle of the year, but certainly earlier than November.
We'll try.
Carrie, Jeff. Carrie, have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, in, in, I think we were still working on last year's goals, which the primary one was getting approval for the building. Until we knew whether we had that or not, it was really hard to set what the core of our agenda would be for this year. So it was a deliberate decision not to try to bring it to the meeting in September.
But too late. Yes.
It was my understanding, from the conversation on the school committee goals, that the school committee goals refer to, sort of, supported or referred to superintendent goals, and that's where the detail was. And I may not have understood that right, but if that's the case, I'm just curious where the enrollment issues fall here.
I actually had that taken, it's, it's in the school approval plan, so they're all kind of connected. It's specific, it's school group, and it's part of school group.
That's what I was, trying to say, be aligned, and that clarifies it. Thank you. Carrie, have her head.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. My question is, as often, is it comes back to the family and community engagement part? And I see that the two of these three goals, that seems to be one of the, one of the things that's checked off in the rubric. But I don't see any strategies or action steps up to me like they have any involvement with, or address family and community engagement. And I'm curious why that's not included on the first goal in designing the new building. I would, I would have expected, and I've never been involved in designing buildings, so, you know, forgive me here, but I know the families in the community are really interested in the design, and I would have expected there to be some involvement. I'm not told as well. Ed, do you have a comment on that?
Well, we're in module six of the MSBA process, and the level of engagement up until this point has informed that design in every step of the way. That continues, in as much as the timeline allows it. Right now, the engagement is more with, specifically around spaces that staff need to give us more feedback on and advisory opinion numbers.
Is there a piece, is there a piece that we're reporting back to the communities, to the people whose input has been considered and what progress has been made? And is that formalized or is that in Steve Sharrett's 12-quarter?
I'm not really sure what that would look like, other than kind of rigorous or robust communications.
Well, the periodic updates, building reports, they would go to, address these kinds of stuff.
Yeah, we're going to continue to do that.
That would help.
Do you want a motion?
Yes, thank you.
I'd like to move to approve the superintendent's calls in the middle of page 25. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the goals? Okay.
Chair. All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. Pass as unanimous, thank you very much.
And, and, Chair, thank you for comments. We'll see, we can talk there about that, about getting out communication to parents and children, going around with the building, thank you, for what is in there.
Brings us to item six, the principals' report. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you is a request for approval for an out-of-state field trip. It's a total of 12 students, one chaperone, part of Minuteman on Thursday, April 13th, 2017, at 8:00 in the morning, returning to Minuteman at 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. Destination is the Museum of Long Park in New York. Want to answer any questions?
Yes, Alice.
I'd like to move that we approve the national transportation student, our field trip to Mala in New York in April 13th.
Second, we have many seconds. Discussion. Yes, Mr. Orton.
Looking, looking at the cost of the trip, Jack, toward the very bottom, it, it says that about a family hardship like that's great. My question really is about students who may be on the free and reduced lunch program, picking up lunches at the cafeteria. It sort of reminds me of, well, thanks for the question, I suppose. How, which I don't think, I won't ask you today at this point, but does this somehow identify students who are getting a free lunch? Could, could the lunch be offered to everybody who's going on the trip? So that anyone who wanted to buy the lunch could, could take it in? It wouldn't necessarily identify those students who are on free lunch?
I certainly understand the question. I'll have a conversation with Ms. Galat, who's running the trip to see if there's any students who fall into that department. If there is, I could probably work something out with Mr. Mahoney that those students have given some money from a fund we have, so I could get them in the ox, but they're not identified, but carried around the front.
Or that everybody going on the trip could buy their lunch here, that's what I was getting at, but that.
Yeah, I think, I think the general part of the whole experience is to eat there and have that.
Yeah, so they could feel like everybody else. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Jim, first.
Because lunch also doesn't cover dinner for a broad campus.
No.
So I think that's also, you know, if that's a financial hardship question, I don't know if anybody qualifies, but that'd be something that we'd like to consider.
We'll certainly look into that.
Any further discussion on the motion on the table to approve the field trip? Does this field trip meet with all the standards of the policies?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. Now, the discussion, we can go back on, favorite motion on the table, please raise your hand. Yes, it is unanimous again, thank you very much. Enrollment.
Also in front of you is an enrollment sheet over the past three years. Any questions? Obviously, you can see our out-of-district members have gone down, most likely due to that state regulation.
Would it be fair to say that the full impact of that state regulation has now been reflected in our current numbers?
Absolutely.
This is the, the end of the biggest drop due to that regulation?
I would say so.
Okay, thank you.
If you take a look at the PGs, there's 31 PGs, but if you subtract that from 623, that leaves you at 592, so we're only 36 students short of our number of 6.8.
Jack White.
Just an observation about, because I did look at this, certainly you can see the impact of the DESI regulations, but non-member enrollment is down 50, 55 students, of which 16 is the drop in freshman enrollment. I think the most impact is if you look at the...
I think the most impact is if you look at the size of the graduating classes of two thousand fifteen to two thousand sixteen, they were eighty-plus non-members, and it's now down to fifty or sixty. So I, I do agree that that's going to, it looks like that impact is behind us, but I think it's unfair to say that the drop in enrollment is attributable to the change in the DESI regulations. That's only a little less than thirty percent of this year's drop in enrollment.
I just want to make a brief comment, and they're all our students, where-
Very well, there's no vote required for that, so would that begin the principal's report?
That's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. When is the enrollment trip? I'm jealous, I'd like-
It is April thirteenth, which is a Thursday.
All right, okay, great.
So I'll get the field trip.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Boquilla.
Under seven A, which is related to Goal One, district improvement, I'm giving you an update on the design work. We'll talk a little bit more about specifics under the building committee report, but on page thirty-one, you'll see a series of meetings that have been happening over the last several months around the design component. And I guess from the standpoint of finalizing the design and the footprint, we have had some new people come on the team that have been, I think, fairly brilliant in helping us streamline the footprint of the building, and as a result, we've had some changes in the shop layouts and classroom layouts, and it's requiring a deeper level of design and input from the teachers and, and staff, and that's what we're in the midst of doing. We're also been visiting other places that have some unique spaces that we think might be appropriate. Some of them have been very helpful, others not so, but it's been a learning process as we continue to try to get these design details completed in really a very short order here, so we can stay on schedule, on time, and have a groundbreaking in the spring. Tomorrow, as a matter of fact, we're taking, or on Thursday, taking a number of folks to MIT Lincoln Lab to, again, look at their collaborative production spaces that we're trying to reflect in the, in the building. And on pages thirty-two and thirty-three, you'll see, just from the MSBA website, a deeper description of the, of the whole of Module Six. Any questions on design? We'll take more questions on the building during that report, I guess.
I have a question, but it's an observation I think you all should know, because I've been part of all those meetings. I am extremely impressed with the contributions and the interest of the faculty in this. They're thoroughly involved, they're going on the trips, or schools. And what's exciting to me is, they can speak to themselves, so is their hair, but it's reality, it's no longer just a hope, it's reality that they're dealing with, and they're, they are, I am just incredibly impressed with how involved the doctorly is on this, and the help that they're giving the design team, and the design team is extremely appreciative. It's just good work, and it's work that's going to continue for a few more weeks, but, you know, the trips that we go on, it's, it's fun to, to talk to them about what's going on in the spaces, what they're going to do in those similar circumstances.
Any else? Under seven B, the district targeted, excuse me, review report, you may recall, last May, we had a, a group from the Department of Education doing what used to be called the Q, Q-
EQAM.
They sent us the draft report in September, we sent back a number of errors, of fact that needed to be corrected. They sent us another version, which I was still not satisfied with, so we sent them back another three or four pages of corrections, which they're reviewing, and they've been very accommodating in incorporating some of our suggestions. None of the people on this team had ever had any experience whatsoever with a regional vocational technical school, so we've been taking the time to educate them, and I think the targeted review will reflect the real give and take, that I've been happy to say our suggestions are being accepted and considered and reflected upon, and that's, it's always a good thing from the department when they get reflective instead of reactive. So I'm hoping that December we'll have that final targeted review, which will be made public, and we'll have some time to talk about that. The school improvement plan, which you've heard a lot about, and was also a, a topic in the district targeted review report, we've made a hell of a, heck of a lot of progress in terms of getting it all integrated, as Jeff and Mr. Horn were saying. There's a copy of it in your packet, it's thirty-seven through forty-two or forty-four. It may seem like a lot, but it's about one quarter of what it was. So the process now is for you to review this over the next month. Do you have any comments or suggestions from the school committee to give them to me? And Jack and I will talk about them and incorporate them, and then, I don't know when your next meeting is scheduled, the school council is here?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow night. So they'll be giving us feedback as well tomorrow night.
Or actually, they'll review the draft.
Exactly. So we'll have, I think, an effective school improvement plan in place formally in December time. So if you have comments or suggestions, as Jeff suggested, give them to Liz, and Liz will give them to me. That way you know I'll get them and read them and be reactive in a timely fashion. Any comments about process with the school improvement? We'll spend some more time on that in December. Goal three, there's our one comment from Karen. Yes.
Being my senior aunt, we had talked earlier that we would do more about family and community involvement in the school improvement plan, which when I reviewed it, I didn't see much of any family and community involvement reflected in the school improvement plan either. And when my son was a student, yeah, that was always a major concern of mine, that it felt like there was minimal family and community involvement, and I would just encourage you to think about trying to implement more of that.
You know, it'd be useful, Sharon.
What?
What would be useful, and is hopeful would be, since you were a parent of the school and went through this, and have seen from your point of view, the places where that sort of communication could be improved, it would be good for you to make specific suggestions on it and send them in.
I would think so.
And we can take a look at it and see which ones are appropriate to do. And that would be the best way to make some progress.
I would do that, I would try and do that.
Look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
And I, I do see a number of parents and students on the school council.
Oh, yeah.
As well.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. C, one and two really are the same, if you look on page forty-six or forty-seven. It's listed in our, my goals as well, that my administrative team is participating in a Department of Ed-sponsored special ed training task force, which they're going to give us a little bit more detail on in the overall special ed update that we're going to give the school committee, if there's time in December, if not, we'll do it in January. So far, it's been a fairly intensive program where it's really focused around the needs of students with special needs, which we have, you know, forty-five to fifty percent of our population are receiving some services, so we decided as an executive team that this would be something we commit some time to. Despite all the other things that we're committing time to, this was considered a priority for all of us. And I think by participating in this, we're going to be eligible for some other kinds of opportunities that the department is talking about in vague terms coming out later on in the, in this school year. But we're pleased to be participating in that, and Amy will give us an update on that later. Mr. Horn.
Is there a cost to the school?
I don't think so, it's just our time.
Yeah, it's a lot, but it's really not time to, so, but I guess you want credits to frame it, and I don't know-
Well, the individuals pay.
-projects like that, you go off of that, then you pay, so it's, you don't have to pay to, you know, to the role, but just travel.
It's a pretty big commitment, too.
Yeah, it is. Sixty-two, sixty-seven point five hours.
Yeah, it's huge.
No, P, P, sixty-two hours of basic training.
And we have four. It's Bill, Amy, Michelle, and someone else? I think Margaret.
Looks like it's her, very good.
Yeah. We have an intermunicipal agreement. Is that, did we hand that out?
It's at table, but not with the question.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not expecting a vote on this tonight. It was, we said possible vote, but in my discussions with Glenn Brand today, who's the superintendent of Acton, Boxborough Regional, he just had a school committee meeting last night where they talked about it and identified some questions. We've clarified some things. Just as a reminder of what this is for, Boxborough is going to no longer be a member after July first, but yeah, we have our middle school outreach program that's offered in five middle schools, three representing the Shoba Regional, and two representing Acton and Boxborough, although they're K through twelve. So to make a long story short, the question has been nagging us for more than a year is how is this program going to be paid for? And in very simple terms, what we've, Kevin has come up with after talking with attorneys in the Department of Ed, is that we simply will give Acton, Boxborough Regional School a bill for their portion of the middle school program, and Acton, Boxborough Regional School District will pay for it and pass those costs on to their member towns through the allocation that's identified within their regional agreement. And that's what this intermunicipal agreement is about. So I've offered Glenn that Kevin and I would come and talk to the school committee about it, as I'm reminding us here, that the intermunicipal agreement is designed to be an agreement between the two school committees, not between the school committee and the select board or a town. It's an educational opportunity within the statute that's identified in there. So, Jack.
As a matter of process or structure, it sounds, it makes a lot of sense. Just a question as relates to the finance. Presumed these costs that would have been tracked in our budgeting process as the middle school expenses when Acton and Boxborough were in the district won't appear there anymore? I, I do think, like, we track the middle school programs and the revolving programs somewhere in our finance and budgetary analysis, we, we need to keep track of what those costs are as well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to track them the same way. We have set up a separate fund, it's just a matter of who's paying the bill, so I don't see any, any concern.
So I'm giving some more feedback from Acton, Boxborough, and I just don't want us to get ahead of their process or their questions, so I'd ask that we, you know, just have to take it for informational purposes, and we'll move from there. Are there any other questions about the item? I don't think we'll need something in the Shoba, since all three towns are still there. Another item there is the admissions policy. We, I've updated the admissions policy and exploratory selection process descriptors within the existing admissions policy. Now that there's a policy, task force appointed, I'll share that with you, and we can go through the process and discussion about doing those. And basically, what it does is it reflects the changes in state regulation, where it says we must accommodate member town applications prior to acting upon non-member towns. In addition, we've also drafted some language, we'll have to see how it fits, around the selection process, once the student is here as a ninth grader. That provides an advantage to member town students in their selection process over non-member town students, which has been the intent of the various, it's been the intent of the district. Once we finalize some of that language and it comes to the school committee, well, prior coming to the school committee, we'll get it vetted by legal counsel and get some feedback from the Department of Ed, because the Department of Ed must approve all admissions policies. The last time we asked them to do that, it took, what, Jeff, three years?
Three years.
Three years. Given all the attention Minuteman seems to get, I'm sure we'll get it acted upon quicker than that, but, so that would be in place, not impacting this year's recruitment, other than the legis, the regulatory things, but it would be in place the following year. And I think that's for this.
Ed, if I understand what you said, and I understand, that's okay, that member town students, like, once, once all the students are selected to enter the school, and within that selection of students, the member town students will have priority in choosing their shops, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Over the non-member town students?
Correct.
Okay, so, which I understand doing that, but that is quite in contradiction to what Alice said earlier, that once you're a student here, all the students here are students. There's a pecking order.
No.
That's not my, just to clarify, I said all the students are students.
Mm-hmm. But, right, right, yes, but there is a pecking order within that classification.
There is no pecking order yet.
There will be.
There might be, might, because when this is approved by the state, we have to probably review it ourselves and see if this is how we want to go. Now, I don't know what people are going to think about it when we do get to that approval point, but as of now, there is no pecking order. In the future, there might be.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I have an opinion or my idea on it, but it's just an observation.
On that point, I can understand, and I think I'd favor in students having a choice of program, you put on the district, what I would say, once a student has been accepted into a program, if it wouldn't be bound by somebody wanting to change or, or go on, and, you know, somewhere kick somebody out as a student, if one day they die a couple of years ago.
I can't make any promises or give you any kind of descriptors of how this is going to work out. When you consider the regulatory issues that we're dealing with, we're, next year, we're going to understand whether or not we have a significant number of sophomore applicants. And so we're going to have to have an admissions policy that recognizes that as well. So the idea that once a student selects and they're guaranteed that for three years, you know, that's going to be part of this, this thought process. Is it, you know, if I can just say personally, I abhor this, I absolutely abhor it, but having been the CEO of the district for ten years, and having been through what we've been through for the last four years, and getting this building approved, and the expectations of the towns leaving, the expectations of the towns staying, the inferences of new towns wanting to join, this is almost a prerequisite for some of them. So it's going to be a good discussion that this school committee is going to have, and I'll implement whatever you decide, but this is nothing I would choose as an educator and as a, you know- and as a, you know, father and grandfather, but it's what I'll do. Jack?
Just a small, perhaps semantic request. Sounds like this policy is appropriately going to deal with both admissions and technical major selections. And so, if we can refer to it as both, as opposed to just admissions, because it does sound like it goes beyond.
Well, I'll tell you, the admissions policy as defined by the Department of Ed includes the selection process. And it also includes a description of your exploratory process. Those are the components that are required within an admissions policy. Alice?
I'd like to make a comment that just from the point of view of policy, I think our job is going to be to navigate this very complicated topic while providing leadership that is supportive of our student body and demonstrates our concern for kids, because this particular time in our history as a country is very difficult to let kids, I think we want to show concern and we move forward. It's an interesting topic, but it won't need to be necessarily a divisive, difficult topic in the future, but just an adult concern topic.
Thanks. I got one of the peers got it up there.
Welcome. Thanks very much. School Building Committee report, Mr. Horton's follow.
As discussed, really, the majority of our work since the building was approved, really overwhelming me by seventy percent of the vote. We've really been working on design. That's not changing the envelope, that's not changing the square footage of the design. That's changing a little bit of the envelope of the design. We have a new architect on board from Castle Booze who we will meet hopefully at our next meeting, and he's trying to smooth out the building, you know, there are a lot of ins and outs, and we're trying to smooth it out. That doesn't change the square footage, but it's just going to probably reduce some of the cost. You're not going to see dramatic changes in it, but there are changes in it. But it also helps inside some of our corridors, some jugs, and now there are going to be straight characters. We're working on that. We have had nineteen meetings, and those nineteen meetings have included the administration, Building Committee, really myself, and the design team along with the faculty, so we've talked about that, and they have been very beneficial in making those some structural changes. We're really dealing also with space. How much space does this particular, you need in a particular program? So, we've made some changes with that because of the request from faculty, so that's all of being done. Hopefully, on our next meeting on the thirteenth, we will have a presentation of where we are on the thirteenth. The change is daily, but where we are on the thirteenth, and I think we'll be excited, I got excited, because we're now in a three-dimensional, like looking at things, so it's really looking, so it's good. The, we have, as you know, we're going to, the construction matter has spent a risk, we'll be sent out a request for interest, firms will be interested. We had nine companies come to us and say they're interested. This is, this is a big project. This is a big project for these firms and they're very interested in it, so that's a good thing. They toured the campus in September, in September, and they looked at it, and we've been again today. We're left with six firms that we're going to be interviewing. One was not qualified because we didn't need our qualifications. Two have opted out because they saw who the competition was and they just realized they weren't going to make it. So, we're left with six. My guess is we may end up with five, because some of it is coming down to the wire, where they're going to make a selection, and two of ours are there. I'm not concerned, because what's left is still terrific. Today, they toured the campus again, because now they come back with their proposals, and so they're going to be coming back again. We have six, we have, each company had about six people, so we had a lot of people going in and out of the building, looking at it. On November, on December twelve, I think it is, we will be interviewing on Saturday, tenth. So, we'll be interviewing the candidates scheduled from seven AM to about six, seven o'clock in the evening. I think we'll be able to cut that down, because instead of eight, we have probably six or five. So, each of us spent about an hour, an hour and a half with us, and then hopefully, we're going to make a decision, and the next day, we'll take it to the Building Committee and they'll make their recommendation. And then on the thirteenth, we'll be asked to vote to approve a general contractor and then a contractor we work out with him, so that is our plan. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep that. We have posted, you've received a copy of our schedule for 2017. The voting committee will meet twice a month. Yes, specifications in there, but it's twice a month. The design team meetings meet with the superintendent and myself once a week, so that continues to go on. Those meetings are really, this is where we are this week, answer a bunch of questions, they go do the work, they come back the next week, give us a report where they are, get more questions, and that's the process we go through. It's extremely well done, and we'll have a general contractor on board to also help us go through that. And that firm also, we'll look at our design, and we're going to be looking at pricing over the next month or so also. So, it's a very quick process. We're trying to catch up to what we lost because of our approval process, and we think we'll be able to do that, because once again, as you well know, if you're going to Boston, there's a lot of buildings there, and there are also a lot of major schools out there in the works, and so, we've got to get moving. Hopefully, in the spring of this, next year, we will be breaking ground. You'll see the questions also was included in this. They've been submitted to the candidates, so all these questions, we expect to have them answered. We gave them to them ahead of time, obviously, because they're going to give us written answers as well as we'll have discussion. Any questions?
Which are the two firms that have already dropped out or been eliminated?
Beacon Agostani, and probably they were in partnership, they were doing it together. Fontaine Brothers dropped out, and Turner Construction. For example, Turner is not sure they really want to be in the school business, and one of them hadn't done enough, construction managers at risk, they're the ones who aren't qualified. So, those are the firms what's left. Excuse me, is Consigliere, Dino, Gilvane, Shawmet Design Construction, Suffolk, and Rich. So, those are the ones that are there. Jack?
I was just going to say too, that I did review the questions. I think it's, I mean, I have not been on a building committee that tackled a project as big as this one, but they seem to be very pertinent, and I was wondering how you could possibly handle them all in, what is it, an hour?
No, that's why they give them to us ahead of time, and, you know, we are blessed. We have an excellent, excellent group of people on our Building Committee, along with the design team. And for example, Dana Hand knows how to do this, and he did it for the Cambridge School Systems, and he's going to win, and he did it for Lexington School Systems. Dave Frazel, Dave Frazel is really a godsend for us. He's been extremely helpful from what he's done. So, we have people who know what they're doing, and I just go along with the vibe.
Thank you.
Ford, just a quick question on the Rich KBE nature. Is KB just, is that anything to do with Castle Booze? Just a coincidence?
But, you know, when you look at Castle Booze and you look at Skanska, they know all these people. They've worked for them all for the most part, and one of the key factors is, is when they gave us their intention, that they wanted to do it, they gave us a team. You get the bios for all the team, and now there are seven or eight people or more on the team, and we've said, you're going to give us a team that's going to stick with the side, and sometimes they like to switch, and I'll add, you know about that, you won't mention all their questions, so.
Andy has a comment. Thank you. I just wanted to bring your attention, something that was put up on your table, a letter we received from the MSBA this afternoon at four o'clock. And the reason I bring it to your attention is that next month, we will need a vote to authorize the district to enter into it, be bound by the project funding agreement. It's a technicality. I didn't want to ask you to vote on it tonight, because we just got it this afternoon, but the information is there and will be included in the December package. They gave us thirty days to get that vote right, so.
To get the whole package to them.
So, that vote will be the last part of the package, we have to get that to them.
Central majority?
Yes.
The MSBA, we've been in touch with them since the approval process. They understand the approval process, they understand the relationships that went on during it. They are extremely supportive of what we're doing, which is excellent. So, I will tell you, because of what I've seen, I am so excited, not just about the building, I'm excited about this district, I'm excited where we're going, and, you know, when you hear from legislators, when you hear from towns, not just our own towns, but there's a lot of enthusiasm about this district, and a lot of enthusiastic about the education programs that we have here. I have, not even, almost hopes, I know that this school is going to be very high demand. This is a good thing. We made the right decision.
Ford, could you briefly explain to me the difference in duties between the CM at risk and the general contractor, what they're.
The CM at risk is going to be a risk. They're going to be a risk to get the job done, and if they don't, they get penalized. So.
They hire the general contractor.
So, they hire and supervise the general contractor and guarantee the work to be done in a certain timeframe, and there's a reason for going that route instead of just going with the general contractor? Is that correct? And the reason for doing that is?
Is to share the risk.
Reduce risk. So, I want to make sure everybody understood that. Alice?
I reckon time around, but also they managed to save money along the way that comes back to the owner, not to them.
Yeah.
And they're putting up a bond that guarantees that they've got the way with all the.
They do.
And they all, they all took their bond and went to the risk.
Why would a project, large project, not go that, that way? I know that some don't.
Most of them do today. I don't really know, and this is my field.
Is that the new report? Any questions? Thank you very much. Assistant Superintendent Report, Mr. Mahoney.
Thank you very much. Page sixty-two through sixty-three of your package, you find the materials associated with renewal of bond anticipation notes from the IME of my employ. For the feasibility study, bond anticipation notes that have been outstanding, this is the third year of renewing the notes. That is in year three, once you get to, once you get to that point, you have to make a principal pay down until one-third of the initial offer. So, we pay down eighty-four thousand eight hundred, or will be on November eighteenth, and we do one-hundred sixty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. That will be matured November seventeenth, twenty-seventeen. The rate is, I don't know, ninety-five percent, awarded to Easton Bank. I provide that for your information only. Jack?
Kevin, now that the vote has been taken and we're into module six, we're out of the feasibility things, right? When does, when does the state contribute their forty percent match or whatever the exact percentage is against the feasibility study?
They have continued to.
They have paid along the way?
Yes, they have.
So, I see, we authorized way back in 2010 the borrowing for the feasibility study, and so, this is the implementation of that.
Yes. No other questions, I'll proceed to IMB, the update on FY18 budget process. We concluded on page sixty-five, the calendar, that this year, we're well on in terms of putting together a proper request. We'll be starting on December first with the Finance Subcommittee, where we'll invite the executive team to make presentations in each of their direct areas. We've always found that to be a great kickoff with the Finance Subcommittee each budget season. We expect to have a preliminary budget for your consideration, just as an update on December thirteenth, and then on January seventh, we'll start bringing the budget recommendation here, consideration as well. This is a calendar that's been consistent with prior years.
Yes, Kevin, do you anticipate any issues or unpleasant surprises with the budget to be proposed?
Not necessarily. I think that we'll be incorporating some short-term borrowing in FY18. We plan on doing the first, the first general obligation bond sometime in September of seventeen, so that'll have an impact in the FY18 assessments. In next month's meeting, I'll be asking the school committee to authorize a bond anticipation note, and that would be about approximately eight million dollars. We're still working on the details, which is the first phase of the construction, the design financing. So, we'll incorporate the required interest payments for those obligations. We'll see an impact on our transportation costs, as we see reduction in transportation services for the draw of the towns. We'll continue to review that, as well as any potential loss of revenue that we will realize as a result of the reimbursement of transportation that will begin associated with those costs. So, those are some of the high-level items we'll be looking at it on a program-by-program basis, that will be meeting with the Finance Subcommittee along the way, prior to recommendations of the full committee in January.
Wasn't on the agenda, but because of the timing of these meetings, I don't think you talked about the change in staffing, the swap of the two Michelles.
Oh, in the business office?
Yes, I think it would be nice if people knew what had happened to, to the first Michelle and where the second one has come to us from.
Yeah, Michelle Resendez has been the Assistant Business Manager, been with Miniman for about five years, and played a very visible and important role with the Finance Subcommittee, particularly as it related to the warrants and a lot of descriptions, and very informative in comparison to answering questions for the Finance Subcommittee, and she's moved on to become the Business Manager at many public schools. So, it's been a good opportunity for her, and she's doing very well, and talked very recently, and she's enjoying her experiences, so she'll do very well there. In her place, we hired Michelle Shepherd. Michelle is a CPA, had her own firm for twenty years, and most recently worked in the treasure collectors' office for the city of Pittsburgh. She's come on board, she's had an interest in moving into the school business field. She'll be here at the December meeting, and we'll talk about the financing of the building, the budget, and I expect the opportunities in the December meeting as well, so.
Thank you, Kevin.
The next item on the agenda, IFC, is the, pages sixty-seven through seventy, is the first quarter financial expenditure report. This is in typical format that has been reviewed in prior years. We donate some of the. We noted some of the variants, made some comments relating to some of these line items. The Finance Subcommittee reviewed this at their October twenty-fifth meeting. There are no comments?
I know we had a lot of questions, but it wasn't well okay. And they were all answered adequately.
So hearing none, I'll move on to our results for our natural gas and electricity supplier on page seventy-two. This is cover memo recording the results of our, 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 it's for natural gas and for electricity. We provided the bids, along with a brief summary from our consultant that we use, Beacon Consultants for the, for the joint. And we've decided to go with a twenty-four-month contract for both. In installation new energy, we'll be providing for both. For natural gas, at a rate of five point six three per therm, which is down from six point eight two. In electricity, the price would be point oh eight eight two two per kilowatt hours, a little lower than the point oh eight eight one cent per kilowatt hour. David?
Kevin, are those fixed rates?
Yes, they are. In fact, you'll note that there were some lower rates that were provided by TransCanada in the results. But because they weren't all in rates, they had past used capacity and with their reliability, so we ought to go with the fixed rates. Couple other items on my report, book donation from MIT, the press post school, that's included in your package for reporting purposes. And we've also received, under item F, a scholarship from the McCarthy Horticulture Scholarship, ten thousand dollars. We'll be asking the school committee to vote to accept the scholarship. And, Diane Dempsey's here, she's a person of our scholarship committee. She may offer a few words about the background on this scholarship.
Thank you. A gentleman from Lexington installed in the building project, and he asked to come in and meet with us. He wanted to do something in honor of his wife as a birthday present. She's dating the Lexington building, aren't you, Tom? So as a surprise, his son and himself established this annual McCarthy scholarship to be awarded to a horticulture student each year. So to thank him, we did a small little birthday party for his wife in the restaurant. His son came in from Manhattan, so mom was, she was really thrilled. We had the whole horticulture group in, and we recognized his wife. And it's, it was really, you know, it's certainly something to do to celebrate people. So it was something he really wanted to do for his wife. So she was part of it. Moving forward, they're gonna be part of the selection process. For this year, myself, the horticulture teachers, a few other people selected the recipient, but the field will be involved moving forward. So it's a ten thousand dollar startup, is how we defined it, and then we'll award a thousand dollars a year moving forward.
Diane, just, to make sure I understand, is this a scholarship that is awarded to a graduating student for something that they do postgraduate?
Yes. They didn't define necessarily what the student had to be doing, whether it was college or career first. They wanted to follow the wife's passion, and she was looking at landscape design. So the students all wrote an essay on what they wanted to do post-graduation, and that's what we used as a piece of the puzzle to select our recipients this year. But they were very open to Minuteman really being involved, not just, you know, outsiders looking at it. But it really all stemmed from the building project and the publicity. You know, they're Lexington residents, but his son did attend them, and they really wanted to do something. He's a lawyer, the son's a big advertising executive, and he's really a pretty gritty guy. All he kept saying was, you know, they're not calling me yet, three in the morning, you know, if they're plowing, they're coming. It's really for Minuteman. So he definitely saw the big picture, and really wanted to do something for our students. So he's a great guy here in Lexington.
How much has been a great event for you to have her onboard?
Well, it was nice, because I got some, she was a flight attendant back many years ago. So we got an old picture, and DVC blew it up. And we took like a little birthday card, it was on all the places, sitting seating in the restaurants, the date, we did a birthday certificate for her. Her birthday's actually the fourth of July, but he feels that her kids overshadowed. So this year was her seventy-fifth, so he really wanted to do something to celebrate.
Alice, do you have a thing?
I would like to move to accept the gift of ten thousand dollars to the Kennedy Horticulture Project, as you mentioned, and I'll.
Further discussion, motion on the table? Seeing no further discussion, voting to vote, all in favor of the motion on the table. Please raise your hand, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It's a very unique and kind thing we see here. It's, really brightens the gloomy evening, the ride back down on Monday. Yes, Karen?
A comment then, and maybe a question. First is, I may live in Lexington, but I noticed the business address is actually in a non-member town, Volpeam, which is sending a lot of students here, and we don't think we'll complete. But also, I, if it's a ten thousand dollar gift and a thousand dollars you hear, that's better than typical interest rates are right now. Is there an expectation that the fund would receive contributions for themselves or others to keep it?
They did, they did say that that was their intention, because, you know, he had brought in the check one day, it was another visit, and he just said, you know, we'd like to start with this. And he just handed me a check, and I said, okay, great, okay. You know, I don't know.
She came, she came running and showing me.
And I'm like, you only got today. That doesn't happen that often.
Where's Kevin?
Thank you very much.
They say a ray of sunshine for like the gloomy ride down on Monday. Yes, Mr. Ford?
Kevin, just a question about the books, if I could, yeah.
Book donation?
Are they new books? I couldn't, I couldn't really read books in the pack. Are they new books or are they used books?
They're slightly used.
And they're about, it was hard to read. What fields were they?
It's like a hundred books.
Were they covered?
Engineering, DVC.
Okay. But they're good shape books and all that?
Yeah, we certainly decided to put them to use.
Good.
Mr. Mahoney, is that the end of your report?
It is, thank you.
Thank you very much. Secretary's Report, Dave Ford.
I didn't hear any, Liz, I don't think you heard any suggestions for minutes, so I leave at the minutes of September twenty-seventh. Accept as presumed. Approved as, as, as presented.
Discussion. If you can just vote, all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. One, let's keep them up, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven in favor, extensions, one extension's opposed, zero. My guess is that the motion passed. Can I have a move to adjourn, please? Or a second? All in favor of the motion on the table, thanks for your time.